Call to order the September 28th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Johnson for our ceremonial opening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There's a change to tonight's agenda. Staff has requested the adjustment to the meeting schedule be added to tonight's consent agenda. This item will establish a work session which will be held in October. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And our first item is the recognition of Merit Badge Event attendees. And I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Robinson for this.
Alrighty. Well, we are very fortunate to have 50 scouts participating in our -- hello, all of you -- in our Merit Badge College or community -- let's see, what are we calling it now? I don't know if we're calling it Merit Badge College still. But a Merit Badge event. And they came and joined me earlier for a conversation, and they'll be coming back on Saturday. And when they are done with today's events and Saturday's events, they'll have earned their citizen in the citizenship in the community badge. So we are very glad to have them. In addition to these 50 scouts, which if you all can stand up so we can recognize you, that'd be great. We have one additional scout who is here, David from Davis Drive. So if David wants to stand up, that'd be great. So we actually have 51 scouts in the audience today. Thank you so much for joining us and for participating in this. I encourage all of you to stay with scouts as long as you can and pursue your Eagle Scout. I think it's one of the most rewarding experiences that you can do. And I'm saying that as a mom of a son who pursued his Eagle Scout. And so I will say this, that as you go through the journey, a lot of people think it's the Eagle Scout project that is the big hurdle. But the hurdle that they go through is earning all of the merit badges along the way because there's a lot of work that goes into this. And anyone who sticks with scouts and earns his Eagle Scout has done a tremendous, a tremendous amount of work. And so I really respect all of you for pursuing that. So thank you for being here and sticking with scouts.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We look forward to coming to every one of your Eagle Scout ceremonies. So don't forget to invite us. Alright, we now move to Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum online and on the printed agenda. There are three opportunities to participate in Public Speaks Out through written comments, calling in, or attending here in person this evening. And if you are here in person and would like to speak, I would ask that you sit in the rows to my right that are going to be highlighted and are reserved for you and for speakers. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and you may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. And that's to your benefit because public hearing speakers get more time. The three-minute time limit will be enforced not to be rude but to be fair to all of our speakers. We have a timer on the podium. It'll start off with a green light. When 30 seconds remain, it'll turn yellow. And when your time has expired, it'll be a flashing red light. And that's the point, I'm going to interrupt you, again, not trying to be rude but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from the meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out. And first, I'll call on our clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
We had two written comments and then five registered speakers. Our two written comments were for Kimberly Stonebraker and Michelle Dawson, who wrote in about the Band Book Week Film Festival with their concerns summarized in the comments provided.
Okay, very good.
Our first registered speaker is Michael Farrell.
Ms. Farrell, please come down.
And following that speaker is Mark Allen.
Well, first of all, thank you for allowing us to speak on the topic as to the Middleton Avenue reconnection. There are several of us, more than several, quite a few of us in the community that are opposed to it. And we have a lot of issues with the fact that it's not solving any problems that we see on either side of Middleton Avenue. It would just create more for either community with increased traffic on very narrow streets. You could barely get two cars side by side on some of those roads. And especially on an egress on the Chapel Hill Road, which is busy enough as it is, you're going to have a lot of problems, especially coming off of Maynard, right there, Maynard and Middleton coming up. That's a huge logjam at least three, four times a day because it's school, and you've got people coming up in and out for work. A lot of other things in the communities, there are a lot of children in the communities that use those roads that want to be opened up. They ride their bikes, they walk their dogs, families walk all the time. I mean, it's a very quiet, low-key, very slow community, opening up, which is probably just make things a little faster and more dangerous for the people, especially the children. Other than that, it's just a bad idea. I don't see any sort of gain on either side of the road. And one thing my grandfather said, he was a civil engineer, he was like, "You always look for a solution to a problem." Trying to find a problem, there's no problem here, so what's the solution? Just open it up for the sake of opening it up? I don't know. But that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Mr. Allen?
And following Mr. Allen is Richard Hall.
My name is Mark Allen. I live in Rock Spray Court in Cary, and I too am opposed to the extension of Middleton Avenue. We have sat here through a public hearing, which I believe a lot of the information that was in the public session was inaccurate, okay? There was a mention of the traffic that could possibly come from that, which is about 30 cars. I counted the parking spots in the apartment complex that's back there and the private homes, and it's over 100, including the new development when it comes in. So that wasn't done properly. There is rumors that there possibly would be, if Middleton was open, that they would find a way to connect it to Harrison Avenue in the future, alleviating a Band-Aid procedure on Chapel Hill Road. That road needs to be widened. It doesn't need to be widened with a turning lane only. The road needs to be widened, and you need to do that. It's not something that we have that is fair. It took me, it's a three-minute ride to come to Town Hall from my home. It took me over 15 minutes with the traffic right now that is on Harrison Avenue. I mean, Harrison Avenue and, of course, on Chapel Hill Road. And there needs to be police watching that in the evening to try to get that traffic to move through, which is not done. There's been no -- you guys have not told us what the benefits to our community would be by opening this up. We only see negativity. We only see the chances of possible crimes that could be committed. We had a couple of weeks ago, about a week or two ago, we had kids that ran through the neighborhood in the evening, one early morning, rifling through cars. And some windows were broken, okay? And this will only get worse if the access area is going to be a problem and be open to more and more traffic and people coming through the neighborhood. We are totally in favor of this developer building beautiful townhomes. We applaud it. It's welcomed to our community as a neighbor, but we do not want the streets connected. I urge that you people do not connect the streets, and hopefully that you make a decision in your planning to do this the right way. There are other projects that could be done to make this traffic smoother in this quadrant of Cary, and it has to be done. Mr. Mayor, you need to do this. And we would applaud you if you can do this and will do this. I came to this town a long time ago just to be living in a quiet area, and now it's going to turn out to be not. I do thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Following Mr. Hall is Julia Mullen.
I am Richard Hall from Taylor's Pond Drive.
Mr. Hall, could I get you to move to your left just a little? There you go. The guys upstairs really appreciate that. Could you start us a clock over, please? I'm sorry you interrupted.
I'm Richard Hall from Taylor's Pond Drive. My speak-out is also about the Middleton Avenue extension. The implementation of this extension changes currently described will be a safety impact to the Taylor Pond pedestrians due to the new cut-through traffic, as well as it'll be a security impact to residents of both ends of Middleton. At a minimum, I'm requesting for a traffic calming device such as a speed bump right at where the two ends of the road meet at the new extension. But even better would be to consider doing a double cul-de-sac-like thing, right? So instead of connecting it, put something that's a traffic blocker, vehicle traffic blocker, but allow pedestrian traffic and bicycles, things like that. This will keep cars heading to Chapel Hill Road on the existing paths that they already use today and already know well versus creating new neighborhood cross-through paths. The cul-de-sac approach keeps and also keeps the number of thieves' exit points from each community smaller. Consider that today thieves have two ways out of each side. When we put this in, they'll now have four ways. So before, two cop cars could block the roads. Now you need 100% more cop cars or four cop cars to be able to block all the roads. The cul-de-sac pedestrian-only benefits Taylor Pond residents getting to downtown without having to go out on Chapel Hill Road to walk down. So that's a benefit that way. It also benefits the people on the east side getting to like Starbucks and stuff that can walk Middleton that way. And I think that pedestrian-only connector instead of a car connector does both of those. Given, you know, a cul-de-sac-only type of approach. I appreciate your further attention to improve this project's changes in an effort to reduce the negative neighbor impacts of this project while basically still meeting your road extension requirement via this out-of-the-box approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mullen?
And the next registered speaker is Kimberly Taylor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. My name is Julia Mullen, and I live in Taylor's Pond. I'm here regarding 22REZ-21 Middleton Avenue townhouses with the goal of preventing connection of Middleton Avenue in Taylor's Pond with Middleton Avenue to the east. My primary concern overall is safety. Tonight, I'll briefly comment on connectivity exceptions and on inconsistency with the Imagine Cary Community Plan, and will ask for council support. I believe that Taylor's Pond meets the exceptions to connectivity provided in LDO Section 710 with 710-3D containing the exception criteria. Representatives from Taylor's Pond met with town staff on September 6th, and we greatly appreciate their taking the time and providing the information that they did. They did not seem inclined, however, to pursue an exception to connectivity, although they had not yet conducted a survey or begun a development plan. I urge council to support an exception to connectivity, however possible. In addition, I believe the proposed connection is inconsistent with the Cary Community Plan in a number of areas. I'll briefly list some of them. Chapter 2, LIVE, the introduction states that Cary will maintain existing strong residential neighborhoods. Policy 1 is called Maintain Neighborhood Character, and Policy 6 is called Encourage and Support the Provision of Affordable Dwellings. Taylor's Pond should be protected accordingly. Page 27 says that connectivity creates safety for people of all ages, whereas the opposite is actually true in this case. Chapter 6, SHAPE, Taylor's Pond is identified as a supporting neighborhood on the Future Growth Landmark map. The subject site, however, is located in the North Academy subarea, and the staff report applies those policies. Cary citizens will be put at risk if the wrong policies are applied to the Taylor's Pond area. The map transition appears to occur at the property line between the two Middleton sections, indicating further that connection is appropriate in this situation. Chapter 7, MOVE, Policy 1 is called Ensure Safety for All Users and Modes. Policy 8 is called Ensure a Well-Maintained System. Connection would be detrimental to both. The Streets Element section affirms that Middleton is a local street designed for slow speeds and low volumes of traffic. The local street depicted in the community plan is actually significantly wider than Middleton and also provides sidewalks. Chapter 8, SERVE, Policy 6 is called Improve Air Quality. Taylor's Pond already deals with bad air quality from Chapel Hill Road, and connection would exacerbate that problem. Bottom line, requiring a Middleton connection is simply not consistent with the town zone community plan. Thank you for your attention tonight, and please support No Connection in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
My name is Kimberly Taylor, and I am a native of North Carolina, and I have a longtime resident of the Taylor's Pond community. And I would like to take a brief second to acknowledge all of these wonderful people that have come out to support for Taylor's Pond. Would you stand up? Thank you so much. Well, basically, what I just wanted to say is, you know, I'm in support of some change, and I really have admired the change that has gone on in Cary. However, with Middleton Avenue, it is very personal to me because I have lived there a long time, I know my neighbors, my neighbors know me. We are so concerned about the integrity of that road. That road cannot handle all of the traffic that will -- people will take that cut-through from Chapel Hill Road, and they're just going to go right through our neighborhood. And our road can't handle it. It's a, it's, the road width is at least 22-foot wide, it's much smaller, two cars cannot travel on that road at the same time. We have buses. Oh my gosh, with the safety of the children getting off the buses. People like to walk down the neighborhood. People park their cars on the side of the road. There's just not enough room. And, you know, you'll hear a lot about safety reasons, and that is, you know, very important. Another thing that I'm concerned about is the water quality. I mean, the drainage and how that's going to affect us. I mean, this development is going to be up on a hill, and we are at the bottom of that hill. So all of that's going to just kind of fall down on us, and we're not prepared for that. I just feel like we need to protect our neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood, it's very individual, and it's not cookie-cutter shape like other neighborhoods. And that's what makes Taylor's Pond so special because we do connect with each other, I mean, as a family. But we are really opposed to connecting the cut-through. We just are not happy with that. But thank you so much for our time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other registered speakers?
That's all registered speakers.
If you're here in the audience and would like to speak on any topic that's not a public hearing, now's your time. Anyone else to speak at this Public Speaks Out forum?
Thank you, council, and thank you for having us and letting us speak tonight. I also am opposed to the Middleton Avenue connection.
Could you give us your name, please?
Yes, it's Heather Griffin Dulcinea.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I do live in the residential community just to the left of Taylor's Pond, off of Middleton Avenue. And my concerns are threefold. First concern is regarding traffic safety. As you come into our entrance at Middleton and Chapel Hill Road, it is a very narrow road, as you've heard others say. It requires two-lane traffic to come in and exit the community with cars parked on both sides of the road. So as it stands currently, there's often a near miss of head-on collision at the corner between Middleton and High Pine Court. And so I fear that if there's more traffic coming in there, there's more risk for those collisions because there's a blind curve there that several times a day, it's a near miss as we're taking our kids back and forth to school. We also -- that corner where people will be coming in. So we have children, there's no actual benches or any place to stand there. They're standing on the traffic island on 54 as cars are coming in. So the more cars coming in, the more risk there is for one of our children to get hit. We also don't have sidewalks in our community. So if we have more cars coming in that entrance going at high rates of speed, which they often do, we have small children that play in the street, and there's no sidewalk for them to play on. So they'd be exposed to that as well. In addition to that, I do have a concern about wildlife. The Taylor's Pond has several families of geese that nest there every year with babies. We've got deer and their offspring in the woods behind us that travel back and forth between the wooded area and the pond. And right now, with slow traffic, there's not a terrible lot of risk to their safety because we all go slowly and go right around them. But if we have all of the traffic coming in off of 54, I'm very concerned that we will either lose that wildlife because they don't want to live in such a high-trafficed area anymore, or that they will just be hit by the traffic that's coming through. And last concern is just quality of life. As you've already heard, we are a very small community, one block of residential houses and several blocks of townhomes. Right now, the streets there serve almost as a sidewalk that connects our community and the banks of housing. If there's traffic coming through there continuously, I fear we'll lose some of that connection and the streets that we all walk, play, and ride our bikes on. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
One of the things that I see Cary doing a lot is applying the same approach to every neighborhood. And the problem with that is that then the neighborhoods end up morphing into one another, and they lose their personality or their, each individual unique characteristic. And while cut-throughs may be fine when it's accessing a primary street, there was an example given at a prior meeting of, hey, how wonderful it turned out to be. I think when you start merging neighborhoods by imposing cut-throughs, you start losing that unique nature and the unique personality of these neighborhoods. And that really needs to be taken into consideration when the decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Mayor and council members, staff, and all in attendance, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Sue Dom, and I've lived at 102 Candy Tough Court in Taylor's Pond for 30 years. And while it's a lovely area in which to live, I've often thought to myself that it would benefit us all if Middleton was extended through to the adjoining neighborhood. And the following are my thoughts on this topic. Thought number one, crime. Despite living at the dead end, I have twice experienced crime at my house, the first being in the mid-'90s when my house was broken into through the front door. The second was in the early 2000s when at least two individuals attempted to break into my home through the back door. There have also been entries into cars, most recently just a few weeks ago. So living on a dead-end street has not necessarily kept our area safe from crime. Thought number two, first responders. I have seen fire trucks drive up Middleton only to have to turn around because Google Maps does not indicate that it's a dead end. Additionally, the very tight turns off of Hickory or Spruce to get to that one section of Middleton can also be a hindrance. And we can all agree that time is of the essence in emergency situations. Also, I feel that our neighborhood would be monitored more regularly if officers did not have to drive up to the dead end and then turn around to go back out the neighborhood and then back out to Chapel Hill Road and then into the next neighborhood. So creating the connection just makes sense for that reason as well. Thought number three, traffic. Some will say that there will be an increase in traffic from outsiders cutting through. However, drivers will almost always take the shortest distance between Point A and Point B. If that weren't the case, they would take the Maynard Loop, which is the designated way to get to the other side of Cary. Now, Chapel Hill Road does desperately need to be widened, and I've got plenty to say about the delays in that project. But for now, I'll just say that if you were to reprioritize that project, it may help to remove some of the opposition to this project. And my final thought, I personally would appreciate the opening for those times when I choose to walk downtown. I currently have to backtrack from Candy Tough down to Taylor's Pond and then out to Chapel Hill Road to walk downtown. And while it might make my Fitbit happy, it's not necessarily what I always want to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one on close, Public Speaks Out, and thank all our speakers for coming this evening. And you're invited to speak at any meeting, whether it's at Public Speaks Out or a public hearing. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, which is item four. If you're following along for the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'll take a moment to review our Consent Agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of the Consent Agenda items. On the Consent Agenda, we have Resolution Authorizing Wake County Housing Authority to Issue Bonds for Projects in Cary, 22REZ-08 Aerial Center Spectrum, Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, CAMPO, Budget Amendment, Amendment, sorry, Adjustment to -- would council members like any of these items pull for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. So moved. There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes each for their comments. Our first public hearing is 23A12, which is 1537 Jinks Carpenter... Assistant Planning Director Katie Dry will introduce the hearing. Council may take action. Let's hear it for Ms. Dry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The owners of 1537 Jinks Carpenter Road have petitioned for annexation of 1.5 acres so the parcel may be connected to Cary utilities to facilitate construction of a single dwelling unit. The total annexation area is 1.75 acres, which includes 0.25 acres of intervening right-of-way, which is adjacent to the site. The area is contiguous to Cary's corporate limits and within the ETJ. The property is owned residential 40 and will remain so. Following tonight's public hearing, council may take action on the request. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. Now's the time for the public hearing for 23A12. And at this time, I'll call on the clerk to summarize written comments and to call on any registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
Okay. If you're in the audience and would like to speak at this public hearing on 1537 Jinks Carpenter Road, now's the time. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion that we approve annexation 23A12.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Dry. Our next public hearing is item 5.2, which is Act 31 Land Development Ordinance and Town Code Amendments. Assistant Town Manager Dana Widmar will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight and it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation and returned to us at a future date. Ms. Widmar.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your consideration, our Act 31 amendments to the Land Development Ordinance and the Town Code. As you may recall, we bring forward two types of act amendments. The first type is to implement a policy or plan initiative and the second type relates to legally required amendments or technical and minor updates. The amendments proposed tonight are the second type, including legal updates to align Cary's ordinances with recent North Carolina legislation and other state requirements, as well as a few technical and minor updates. Act 31 has three parts. Item A includes legally required amendments for stormwater to align with state statutes. Item B includes clarifications and corrections. And item C includes a minor update to the Town Code. I'll provide a brief overview of these proposed amendments. For item A, House Bill 488 became effective on August 16, 2023. This new legislation prohibits local governments from requiring payments from owners of stormwater control measures for the future maintenance or repair costs. In accordance with prior state statutes, Cary has required stormwater control measure owners to provide funds equal to 15% of the construction cost. Cary could then use these funds if the owner failed to perform necessary maintenance or repairs. Under the new law, local governments may now only require owners to establish a segregated account with funds equal to 10% of the construction cost for the purpose of maintenance and repair. Additionally, Cary's LDO needs to be updated to reflect the state's current requirements with regard to civil penalties for projects that violate erosion and sediment control laws. These amendments include new texts that provides violators with the option to request remission of a penalty from the North Carolina Sedimentation Control Commission. The amendment also directs that any civil penalties collected by Cary must go to the state's Civil Penalty and Forfeiture Fund, which is distributed to the local school Item B provides clarifications and corrections for references to town council to be consistent with the LDO as well as current processes and procedures. Specifically, these references relate to the shift of most quasi-judicial decisions from council to the zoning board of adjustment, as well as references to the approving body for plans or plaits. Finally, item C updates the Town Code to align recycling cart roll-in fees with solid waste and yard waste roll-in fees. This concludes an overview of the Act 31 amendments. Following the public hearing, I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Widmar. Now's the time for the public hearing for Act 31 Land Development Ordinance and Town Code Amendments. I'll call on our clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
We have one written comment from Mary Collins and she shared her concerns about going along with standards that are set by the state and encouraged council to set higher standards than required. No registered speakers.
If you're here in the audience and would like to speak at this public hearing, now's your time. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing. And just to answer that one comment, we are a Dillon's Rule state, sorta, which means we can only do what the legislature allows us to do. And so when they say you must do something, we must do something. And so we're not... We can't have higher standards. We can only do what they allow us to do. So hopefully that will help that one person who is concerned. And I'll open it up to my colleagues for any other questions or comments.
I'll make an editorial comment about House Bill 488. Because I can't resist myself. But, you know, the people who voted for this, I'm sure they thought they were doing something good, pro-business, but it is actually pro-tax. And I would ask if there's any state legislators watching this video, that they recognize the fact that when it's businesses versus municipalities, it's really businesses versus the citizens of the municipality. And so it's going to be our citizens that pay for this and they're the ones who are going to be punished by this law. And so I think it was a huge mistake by the state and I hope that they rethink it in the future.
Very well said. Thank you. Other comments?
I just had a question. Has staff figured out what the fiscal impact of this will be to our Cary citizens and to our budget at all? Because it's quite a... It's quite a change.
So we will no longer collect the fee. There was a part of the legislation that if people request a refund of fees paid in the past, that we may have to refund those fees. But the impact of that is not quantifiable at this time because we don't know how many people might ask for their money back.
What about for the future fees? Do we base our budget...
No.
Do we change our budget or anything like that?
We don't base appropriations based upon this one-time revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
To kind of tag on to that, do we have any idea in the past how many times this fee has come into play and it's been required to be paid?
Oh, it's been going on for many years.
So we require it to be paid for every stormwater control measure since, I think, the '80s, maybe? But to my knowledge, and Dana can correct me, we have not had to dip into what we've collected to repair a stormwater control measure as of yet.
So most of the developers take it on themselves to do the repairs and the town in Cary is then not required to leverage those funds that they've put aside?
Right. We oftentimes have to write letters and remind them of their responsibilities. But so far, to my understanding, we have not had to undertake any repairs ourselves.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Just a question. We have recently done some improvements with BMPs and we've taken over a couple of subdivision or considered subdivision. Did the money for that come out of this fund or does that comes out of a different fund?
Did not come out of this fund.
No. So this fund is just sitting there anyway and we just carry it over? I'm trying to figure out because that would seem like a good use of that money.
That's right. Yeah, that's right. It's sat there for quite some time, kind of as an assurance policy. But that doesn't change the fact going forward, there's now more exposure. And so we've been fortunate with our history with developers in this area. And we also have other ways of getting them to meet stormwater standards. So it's not the only tool in the toolkit. I'm sure the state will try to take those away later. But it's not the only piece of leverage that we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Very good. This will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation and we'll see it in a few months. Thank you, Ms. Widmar. We now move to discussion items. Our first two discussion items, Construction Cost Contribution and Joint Use Agreement with Wake County Public Schools and USA Baseball National Training Complex Field Three and Four Conversion Project Bid Award. And so I'm going to first recognize Councilmember Robinson for her remarks.
Great. Thank you so much. We all have had discussions at a previous council meeting about this opportunity to build a field for Wake County to help them with Morrisville High School. And I want to say that whenever Wake County needs us, we want to be there and help them when we can, but not at the expense of the safety of citizens. And it is my belief, and I think it's the belief of some other people on this council, that building a field, a baseball field for the high school eight and a half miles away is not the safest approach. So when we were in that previous meeting, the representative from Wake County told us that it was an FAA regulation that was prohibiting a field from being put there. But I... The day after, I asked staff to look into it and that is not the case. It's not FAA requirement. I went and looked at the RDU overlay and in Section 4.4.5D1B, it says that you cannot put schools in the overlay, but you can put stadiums and arenas for sporting events. So I presume that fields would fall into that versus the school institutional side. I spoke to our colleagues on the Morrisville Commission and the few that I talked to expressed they would like to have the field adjacent to the high school. They don't really want their high school to have a field so far away. And they offered to Wake County Public School System that they would change their UDO, their ordinances, to allow a field to go in the overlay. And they were told by Wake County, don't bother, we're not going to change our ordinance. So based on that information, I went and spoke to a couple of school board members and they were open to finding out what the history is on this. It's our understanding that the policy was established like about 15 years ago or so and the school board may not know that they have the authority to change their own policy on this or that the policy even exists. So I'm asking today that we go ahead and table this rather than vote to build this field at this time for Morrisville High School. Give the school board an opportunity to look into this and figure out if they want to change their policy so that Morrisville High School can have a field adjacent to their school building.
Very good research. Thank you. I had no idea.
Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we table... Let me look at the item number, sorry. That we table the Resolution Authorizing Wake County Housing Authority to Issue Bonds for Projects in Cary. Is that the right one? No, that's not the right one.
Yes, that one, it also... To table the bid award, is that correct?
Number one and two?
One and two. Okay, so table both.
Indefinitely.
Does it have to have a date?
Does it have to have a date?
No.
Okay. I would love to have it come back.
I think we can get everything out there for the next council meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So what is the date of the next council meeting?
October 26.
Okay. We'll table it to the next council meeting on October 26.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion or questions?
Worst case, if you had to, we table it again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, questions?
No, I just appreciate Ms. Robinson's work on this and reaching out to everyone. Part of me is, you know, it's a good deal for Cary. We get a field at a much reduced cost than we normally would. That said, 100% agree with what you're saying. So I don't see the rush on this. I think it's worth doing our due diligence to look into it and make sure that we're making the best decision for our citizens as well as Morrisville. So good job.
Thank you. I agree. For people in the audience, it would be a good deal for us to get this ball field in Cary. It's good for us, but not at the expense of the safety of other people.
Well, and the timeline associated, can you imagine, you know, the families have kids that want to participate in the sport right after school. They've got a 40-minute drive on a bus, going 35 miles per hour for nine minutes.
If they take the bus.
If they take the bus. Other... Well, from an equity perspective, some kids don't have cars. Some parents don't have the ability to pick them up.
To leave work.
Leave work and pick them up. So it's a win-win. And I also talked to the Wake County about the airport overlay and with legal on both sides, changing the airport overlay isn't a requirement if they agree that the law for sports is in keeping with the stadium idea, which seems to be the case.
Good.
I think the Housing Authority, that was the wrong one. So that's...
Okay.
Reference the right one.
Let's do the right one. Okay. I move to table the resolution and bid award.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are we good with the correction?
Didn't seem right. Thank you for...
All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. That concludes our discussion items. We have no closed session, so I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.